Ten o'clock, we're going to open up our special session of August eighth. This is for a joint meeting amongst other counties for appointment for District 55 vacancy.
Brad is your speaker?
Now it is. And so, our meeting's now open, so we'll call in. Are you getting them online also? I see they have an option for that.
I know they did. I just wanted to have some of the emails present for me for...
Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. To enable audio control, please enter your audio PIN followed by the pound or hash sign. If you do not have a PIN, just press pound or hash.
I didn't even get my three, four digits down. They said it was like, "Good as it is," right? No, we didn't.
You already did.
Yeah, I don't know.
Oh, I thought we were... You guys ever been called?
No, not yet. Probably have to stand up. Come on, come on. Come along. I mean, what did you do? What did you do? I'm sorry. I guess it's like really poor.
Judge Crawford, are you on the line?
Yes.
Good morning. Judge Crawford. Judge Crawford, are you on the line?
We, Crawford and, yeah, Pitt County is here. We're just trying to get everybody to see us.
We'll do a roll call once we start. I know somebody texted me and they'll be probably in there two more. So let's wait until he gets here as far as...
Okay.
No? No? Want to talk? You're on the line.
You busy? Where you at? Some place to be, boy?
Tony. What are you doing?
Donnie. Or Brian? He's got me. Oh, well, not even in Portland, no. He better, he better call it.
I don't want to be there yet. It'll be a five or four hours. Come on. Hey, all, Mrs. Minchie Martin's coming to the conference. I love her. I have an art, architecture odor on my barn from here. You know, the wood building things, they're selling. Yeah. You're, so I think my friend, I'm going to work with the shop right now. It was fun.
She getting them?
Yeah, I think that's me more. I don't know. I thought she...
Wait, you're calling?
What do you do?
This is going to walk on the highway, so maybe we'll...
Oh, really? That would be last night.
Okay, well, it's just past ten o'clock, so let's, uh, let's open this special meeting.
And, uh, I think first step, let's do a roll call of everybody who's here on the phone. Here and on the phone. We'll start with on the phone, then we'll do the people that are physically here. On the phone, Brad Winters, Lake County, and we have opened up a public meeting for Lake County at this time. Also, James Williams, Lake County. Mark Howardson, Lake County.
Sorry, guys. Tell him that he might find him coming.
Donnie Boyd, Clamath County.
Rick Dyer, Jackson County. Bob Stroster, Jackson County.
Olene Roberts, Jackson County. Deborah Children, Prignell.
Hey, anybody else on the phone? That's the name? Somebody's got a little feedback on the phone? I want to commute that mic.
Somebody was a shop, shop clerk, and she's on there.
I thought you might be hearing it. All right, and now the people here, also, it's Alfred for County Judge. Jerry Brummer for County Commissioners.
Vicki Breeze Iverson.
Peter W. Sharp.
Commissioner Kelly O'Deere of DeShute County.
Sheriff Billy, County Clerk.
Olene Ferguson, County.
Pastor Jerry.
Mark Kennyton for General Elections.
Shane Pedro, House of Commerce.
Brian Anderson.
So I'm going to just double check on the phone. Do I have Brian Barney on the phone yet? Do I have Phil Henderson on the phone? I need to see if somebody's on the way.
Who's on the way?
And Derek from Clamath, are you on the phone? Okay.
So I think, uh, the best way to do this is to just give each candidate about three minutes to talk about themselves and why they think we should vote for them. And then we'll go through that, and I think the easiest way will just be say their name and who you plan on voting for, and then we can go through that. Um, we, I appreciate that. We don't allow to opt-in vote for anybody, so you're only allowed to vote for yourself. Uh, so anybody that's not on the phone does not use vote. Once the voting's finished and we've counted the votes, it's really important that we have everyone sign this specific sheet that Cheryl is holding her hand right now. And so I propose a process of going through county to county, sending it to the next county, and then eventually sending it back to Cheryl, and then she can send it to the state. Uh, I'm just going to make some bigger roll. I'm going to start with Crook County, send it to DeShute County, send it, I guess, you guys are all here, so, and if Phil doesn't get off, oh, that's a bad time. So maybe Crook, Clamath, Lake, Jackson, back to Crook. Are you comfortable with that?
So Judge, this is Commissioner Boyd. Are you going to send a list of if you wanted to come to Clamath County? I'm understanding you want Clamath to send it to Lake, is that correct?
Correct.
And when I... This is Cheryl, and I'll put that all in an email when I send it to the first person, and you can just kind of keep going from there.
You are awesome. Thanks for taking care of us.
Sure, no problem.
Is there, uh, is there a point person in each county you could send us an email of their email? Just so we're not sending it to three different committees. The problem is all the signatures on one page. We can't have eight different pages with different signatures.
So, Clamath County, that's no problem. We will send you the, our email address. It comes to all three of us.
All right. Well, okay, again, each one, you need to print it and then all three sign it and then move it on, if that makes sense. You can't print it, you sign it, have Kelly print it and sign it, and Derek print it and sign it. You all have to sign those, uh, one copy that's been sent and printed.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you.
So, so Judge, the, the forms did come out in an email, and is it possible for us to just sign those forms by county? And you have individual forms from each county and compile them that way, or does it all have to be on one form?
I asked, sorry. I specifically asked the Secretary of State that question, and they were very adamant that it has to be all the signatures on one form.
Okay.
And that's why we're trying to come up with the most efficient process to get all those forms printed. All of us very busy elected officials. So is there a time for you to have it done? We have to have it in last Thursday.
The 13th, yes.
How do you get it in?
Yes, we'll make sure. Today's Thursday, but when we're doing... We're going to try to have it in by the end of the day tomorrow. All the signatures and everything, I would really like to have it by the end of the day tomorrow, but we'll see how fast.
Are we going to be in the meeting in Clamath tomorrow?
To do that.
I mean, I got it. Certainly wants to give me...
So Clamath can just get it from the meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Do we have anybody new going on the phone, Colonel?
No, this isn't somebody new, but a point of interest with Clamath County and Lake County being able to sign that. Commissioner Boyd, we, all three of us will be at the Chillicoon meeting tomorrow. If you could bring the paper there, we could all three sign at one time tomorrow in Chillicoon. If that, if that would be efficient enough or easy, it'd have to be done today, Judge.
Well, that would be no, that would be no problem. I just don't know how we could immediately expedite it from the, from the Chillicoon meeting over to wherever it was going to go from Lake, you know?
Yeah, got it. Copy. Okay, so... Then change it and make us the last one.
So, uh, this is Commissioner Anderson from DeShute County. I'm joined then.
Okay.
We would still have to give it from us to whoever. In Chillicoon, I don't know the person that they have.
So, um, those on the phone, um, I know you guys from Clamath, we're talking about
going to Chillicoon, and you said that's also going to, um, the Lake County Commissioners will be there as well?
That is correct.
So I do like the idea somebody said about moving you guys to the end. So I think that's what I will do. Um, so I think the first email we'll send to Jackson, and then, um, we do have one of the DeShute County Commissioners online, so we'll work from there. Either Jackson will go from, from Jackson and go on to DeShute, and then to Clamath, and Clamath can hit Lake, and then it can come back to me. Um, or we'll see if we can maybe physically get DeShute's signature, and so we don't have to do the email on that one, so. I'll send it, I'll, I'll copy everybody when it goes out the first time, so you'll know the order and what we expect of that.
Okay, when you shoot it down here, I will make sure that Clamath County takes it to Chillicoon, so there will be no need to take it and send it to Lake.
Okay, okay. Okay, and that was, um, Commissioner Boyd?
That's correct.
With you? Okay.
Uh, Lake County's good with that. That's perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Boyd just got back from, I think, about three weeks in Sweden and all over. It's like, we, they were waiting for some papers, so he showed them. Finally got our papers, so we can go back to America. Yeah, they met at the cattle ranch down in Texas. I mean, I'm working at the cattle ranch. Pretty cute.
Thank you, Patty.
You're so welcome. I mean, you guys, it's, it's on Facebook, right?
No, we, we got, we got a lot of our papers taken care of, yes. Yeah, it was a lot of, a lot of issues.
Sure, it was. Never used me. Guys, how you doing? Did you drop up here today?
I was. Um, I got back to Lake County about 3:30 a.m. this morning, and I really didn't feel like driving anymore, so I, uh, I decided that from the phone was best.
It's like 31.
Okay. So you give Tony one more shot, and he raised that?
I know. Maybe he had to tell for the roundsabout, because I fear there's finally 15 at round about. I was telling him that, you know, that there's truckers for 20, and then my first trailer last year, we rode in the, prayed for the rodeo, and I'm pointing to it, it's my little one. Yeah, the curb, so they're going to actually replace it.
No one ever watches the video of North Lake County.
We didn't look. No, we're, uh, across from the courthouse next to the family factory. The family factory, the lunch spot. Okay, I'll cover up it.
Tell it to Brown and me, right in front of my pickup.
Just trying to get their person.
Those on the phone, Seth is going to get one of the commissioners that's, um, traveling from one of the other counties. We're in a different building than we normally are, so. Okay.
While we're waiting, Commissioner Anderson couldn't be there today because we've, my wife scheduled a helicopter ride for a patient that she takes care of, maybe his birthday. And I got to tell you, spectacular thing to fly around county, um, around to the event, all the way down Loudview, I mean, uh, being a commissioner, because you can go by every decision you've been involved with and see it from the air. So it's pretty interesting. Um, and it was, it's a beautiful morning to do it, so I'll probably try it on campus.
I bet they were going to drop you off here.
Well, that was next, that was next to $200, so I decided...
We would have made it.
What's that?
We would have made it.
What's that?
Drop something, throw you around. Go ahead, I'll pick you up.
Yeah, that's, that was going to, that was going to blast. That was how it is.
Yeah. Can she afford the drink?
Morning, Donnie. How are you? Good to see you. Betcha. Right here.
Okay. Are you getting any people on the phone?
I'll see you, Mr. Anderson.
Oh, good.
Commissioner Brian, uh, from Pitt County, and Derek from Clamath. Very...
Well, I need you to go forward. Um, so let's start with, uh, you, you minute. All right. There you go. There you go.
Twenty-six, seven, eight, seven, four. Let's get this one.
Derek, would you like to go first?
We get one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
I can do that, I can slide.
Two between all three, and two between all three.
Goodness, everyone, thank you. Well, greetings to everyone. Thank you for all the effort you've put into being in the locations you are to be here on this call. I'm actually joining you from, uh, Teguanga. This is a family vacation we've taken at the same location for thirty, thirty-plus years. And, uh, just a little bit about myself. My husband and I have been married thirty, thirty-eight plus years. We have, uh, four amazing children, uh, adult children, they all live in Central Oregon, which has been such an incredible blessing for all of us to be together here in Central Oregon. Um, we're somewhat recent transplant to Central Oregon. We moved here in 2015 with my parents. We came from the Newburgh area, and, um, to move my parents in with us to help my guys take care of my mother, she since has passed away. But that is something that's been always very important for our family, to take care of our parents, and we did that with my husband's parents. They care for the elderly is very important, and for our own families is very important to us. Um, my start in politics, I mean, just basically becoming a registered voter as soon as I possibly could at eighteen years old, uh, am an Oregon native, and, um, started working probably my first political campaign in 1994 on the Bill Witt campaign. And remember my oldest son helping, um, Steph Hunbleus for that campaign? And then we, aside from, I'm a native Oregonian, but we did have a stint in Nevada and California, where some of my representatives that that side nationally were Perry Reed and, um, Diane Feinstein, and so those, those terms outside of Oregon were quite an adventure politically. Moved back to Oregon in 2005, became involved with, um, an organization that I've been a part of for a long time, Silent Mor Awareness. One of my great passions that has really gotten me into the political arena has been, um, the issue of abortion and having a greater discussion regarding abortion and health care, really, um, and how it affects women's lifelong health, became, um, the founding president for the Yankton County Republican Women while also being a CCP in Yankton County before moving over here to Central Oregon.
We just, we just dropped, they just dropped our call.
Here's the number right here.
Your call? I, uh, my, which one? This one right here?
Yeah, this one right here.
Please enter your access code followed by the pound... To enable audio control, please enter your audio PIN followed by the pound or hash sign. If you do not have a PIN, just press pound or hash.
I take my story and the world life science, and I started in the Oregon State Legislature, then have gone, uh, to DC, um, have had nine winters, worked very closely with Congressman Walden's office. It's a new message and a new narrative in the marketplace that has, um, gained tremendous. We don't really talk to pro-life or pro-choice, it's about women's health and the science behind abortion, uh, in the bigger scope of things. So that is really the passion of mine. We have, uh, a House and Senate resolution in the works in DC, and well, it's through the National Federation of Republican Women. The resolution that we created from the local Central Oregon Republican Women, uh, has gone to the state level, and it's going on to the National Forty-Piennale Convention that's September for hopeful ratification, which then expands that message nationally. So that is really the, uh, a huge writing force, uh, in my life, taking my own story and the stories of countless others into the places of public policy, and getting back to best practices in public policy is a real passion of mine. So that's, Captain, in a nutshell, where I come from. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Vicki Breeze Iverson. I've been a lifelong Republican. I've been registered to vote since I was eighteen. My husband Brian and I own and operate several small businesses in Pringle. I've been a Realtor since 2001 and co-own the Pringle Lindemere office. I know the challenges of small business and land use and taxation. I'm this generation on a ranch here in Pringle. Brian and I love raising our boys, who are eleven and thirteen years old, on the ranch. My experience of working at this state capital and this campaign and being Chair of the Pitt County Republican Party has fueled a fire that has brought me here today. I think that Oregon's greatest resources have traditionally been our natural resources. We need to honor these. We need to remember the stewards that, that have passed it down to us generations, and they taught us more about how to preserve and regenerate those resources than the latest institutional studies, and I think we need to honor that. I believe in local control. I think our local governments have a good grasp on what our communities need. I'd like to see, instead of growing government with more oversight, I'd like to let our locals determine what resources are needed, verges reversitism from the communities. I'm pro-life. I'd like to expand the conversation of women's health. I believe in the freedoms our nation was built on, that's freedom of speech, freedom of owning your own, freedom of making choices for our education, medical freedom, freedom in raising our kids, and I, I believe I can be a solid voice standing up for those freedoms in Salem. Turn C.
And her, you too.
Well, I guess I'm that. My computer, W. Sharp, father born and raised on a smaller ranch, ten miles west of Pliner. My first eight years was in the Pliner school. I graduated from Pitt County High School. Uh, went into the Air Force, did four years in the Air Force. The only exciting thing in the Air Force was I formed a, helped form a skydiving club and jumped out of airplane, and that's a lot of fun, but it hasn't done, if you need to try it, it's a lot of fun. Of course, now they're spoiling it because you have to jump with a companion. We just dove out, so. Didn't want to talk more about that. And that's even more exciting than coming out of a chute on saddle-browed bareback or even a beam boat, but anyway, I really have no interest in politics, but I did run for County Commissioner three different times. The first two times was because I did not, was not impressed by the ones running, and I figured I have no right to tell you what to do if I'm not going to step up for the job. The third time was the county whip and patrons asked me, and at the last moment, Jerry jumped in, and, uh, he wanted hands down, and I'm really glad because he walked there and I wasn't in. But I, I really don't have any interest in going to Salem to do that, but because of the fact that I am honest, I stand for what I believe in, I fight for what is right, and I won't back down to anybody or anything, so if you decide to send me to private in the state, like, I would be willing to go in, but I'm actually supporting Vicki. She's the one we need to have go. Thank you.
Okay, first of our candidates, uh, I propose we can do a roll call. I'll have Cheryl say a name, and then whoever's name is called, you, uh, vote, say the name of a candidate in question. Oh, I guess, yeah, I'm sorry. Do, uh, so you hear the, uh, folks on the phone or here want to ask any questions to the candidate?
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, Vicki, I just wanted, you said you were for medical freedom. Does that mean you're, um, on the anti-vaccination side? I believe that we can have the choice. Very good. Yes.
Great.
What about you?
I personally believe that we need to make our own choices, and so the government telling us to do anything, I'm anti that. Get right off the bat, walk right off.
Deborah? Yeah? What is your position on vaccination? I am, I support, I supported the team, the HP3063 was a incredible overreach. People should not be forced. I raised my kids. We were given exemptions. The, the vaccinations have changed over the years. We no longer use the live virus. There are so many experimentations going on, um, it, within the vaccination field, and it's a dangerous precedent to set, the, that forces seventy-two injections on our children from birth to eighteen. It is complete government tyranny of yours. Long story short. Thank you.
Here.
Real quick, uh, this is Commissioner Tony Bohn. I do apologize for being late today. I do thank you, though, for this process, you know, respecting the process, this is an appointment of a state legislature midterm, so, uh, thanks for taking time to get together. Uh, one of the thoughts I have as a current commissioner is the local control about land use. Uh, we, we celebrate our land use in the state of Oregon and our statewide strategic land use, but forty and forty-five years later, uh, it's getting kind of tense in some areas about city and urban growth, boundary, rural development. Um, you have any thoughts on that around real quick?
Well, my thought on, on that right off, with that just taking Pringle towards that, is that I think they should have done, drawn the line and stopped it a long time ago. If you want to build up on the hills around, I don't care. Move all you want up there, but don't be eating up our best farm ground. Got to kick themselves off.
From the Chillicoee meeting over to wherever it was gonna go from Lake, you know.
Yeah, got it, copy. Okay, so.
Us and change it and make us the last one.
So, uh, this is Commissioner Henderson from Deshute County. I've joined the.
Okay.
We would still have to give it from us to whoever. And in Chillicoee, I don't know if they have.
So, um, those on the phone, um, I know you guys from Clamas, we're talking about going to Chillicoee. And you said that's also gonna, um, the Lake County Commissioners will be there as well?
That is correct.
So I do like the idea somebody said about moving you guys to the end. So I think that's what I will do. Um, so I think the first email we'll send to Jackson. And then, um, we do have one of the Deshute County Commissioners online. So we'll work from there. Either Jackson will go from, from Jackson, it'll go on to Deshute and then to Clamas. And Clamas can hit Lake and then it can come back to me. Um, or we'll see if we can maybe physically get Deshute's signature. And so we don't have to do the email on that one. So, um, I'll send it, I'll, I'll copy everybody when it goes out the first time. So you'll know the order and what we expect out of that.
Okay, when you shoot it down here, I will make sure that Clamas County takes it to Chillicoee. So there will be no need to take it, send it to Lake.
Okay, okay, okay. And that was, um, Commissioner Boyd?
That's correct.
With you? Okay.
Uh, Lake County's good with that. That's perfect. Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams just got back from, I think about three weeks in Swaden and all over. It's like really, they were waiting for some papers. So he's, so we're, I'm like, whoops. I only got our papers so we can go back to America. Yeah, they met at the cattle ranch.
Wait, I don't see your, it looks like you're.
I mean, it's on boardings at the cattle ranch. Pretty cute.
Thank, thank you, Patty.
You're so welcome. I mean, you guys, paper, kids put things on Facebook, right?
No, we, we got, we got a lot of our papers taken care of, yes. Yeah. It was a lot of, a lot of issues.
Sure, it was. Never used to be. Guys, how you doing? Drop up here today?
I was. Um, I got back, um, to Lake County about 3:30 a.m. this morning and I really didn't feel like driving anymore. So I, uh, I decided, uh, from the phone was best.
It's like 31.
Okay. So you're gonna tell any more shots? Do you raise that?
No, I know. Maybe you have to tell for the roundabout because I fear there's finally fixing that roundabout. I was telling him that a year ago. There's truckers were telling me. And I went to my first trailer last year. We wrote in the, the rodeo. And I pointed through with my little hand, here.
Yeah, I almost did something.
Yeah, the curb. So they're gonna actually replace it.
No one ever watches the video of North Lake County.
We didn't vote. No, we're, uh, across from the courthouse next to the sandwich factory. The sandwich factory for lunch spot. Okay, I'll come around you.
Tell them it's a brown building right in front of my pickup.
This time you get their.
Those on the phone, Seth is going to get one of the Commissioners that's, um, traveling from one of the other counties. We're in a different building than we normally are. So, okay.
Well, while we're waiting, uh, Commissioner Henderson, couldn't be there today because we've, we might have scheduled a helicopter ride for a patient that she takes care of, maybe at birthday. And, uh, again, it's a spectacular thing to fly around county, um, around to the event, all the way down Loudview, everything. Uh, being a Commissioner because you can go by every decision you've been involved and see it from the air. So it's pretty interesting. Um, and it was just a beautiful morning to do it. So I'm probably true in all counties.
I bet they're ready to drop you off here.
Well, that was next, that was next to $200. So I decided.
We would have made it.
What's that?
We would have made it.
What's that?
Drop up and throw you around. Go ahead, pick you up.
Yeah, that's, that was gonna, that was gonna blast. That was, that was.
Yeah, you're cute. Or is it right?
Morning, morning. Are you? We didn't see you. You met you.
You're right here.
Okay. Any, any people on the phone?
I'll call you, Henderson.
Oh, good.
Commissioner Bryan, um, from Crete County and Derek from Clamas. There.
Well, I need you to go forward. Um, just wanna start with, uh, a few minutes. All right. I need you. There you go.
Chad, would you like to go first?
I can do that. I'd like.
Goodness, everyone okay? Well, greetings to everyone. Thank you for all the effort you've put into being in the locations you are to be here on this call. I'm actually joining you from, uh, Cape Colanga. This is a family vacation we've taken at the same location for thirty, thirty-plus years. And, uh, just a little bit about myself. My husband and I have been married thirty, thirty-eight plus years. We have, uh, four amazing children, uh, adult children. They all live in central Oregon, which has been such an incredible blessing for all of us to be together here in central Oregon. Um, we're somewhat recent transplant to central Oregon. We moved here in 2015 with my parents. We came from the Newburgh area. And, um, to move my parents in with us to help my dad take care of my mother, she since has passed away. But that is something that's been always very important for our family to take care of our parents. And we did that with my husband's parents. The care for the elderly is very important and for our own families is very important to us. Um, my start in politics, I mean, just basically becoming a, a registered voter as soon as I possibly could at eighteen years old. Uh, I'm an Oregon native and, um, started working probably my first political campaign in 1994 on the Bill Witt campaign. And remember my oldest son helping, um, step envelopes for that campaign? And then we, aside from, I'm a native Oregonian, but we did have a stint in Nevada and California where some of my representatives at that side nationally were Perry Reid and, um, Dianne Feinstein. And so those, those terms outside of Oregon were quite an adventure politically. Um, moved back to Oregon in 2005, became involved with, um, an organization that I've been a part of for a long time. Salem Amore Awareness. One of my great passions that has really gotten me into the political arena has been, um, the issue of abortion and having a greater discussion regarding abortion and healthcare, relating, um, and how it affects women's lifelong health, became, um, the founding president for the Yanville County Republican Women while also being a CCP in Yanville County before moving over here to central Oregon.
We just, we just dropped, they just dropped our call. Any call? Am I, am I, question on this one right here? And then the access code, yeah.
Please enter your access code followed by the pound. To enable audio controls, please enter your audio PIN followed by the pound or hash sign. If you do not have a PIN, just press pound or hash.
I take my story and the worldwide science and I started in the Oregon state legislature. Then have gone on, uh, to DC, um, have passed nine years. I've worked very closely with Congressman Walden's office. It's a new message and a new narrative in the marketplace that has, um, gained tremendous. We don't really talk to pro-life or pro-choice. It's about women's health care and the science behind abortion. Uh, it's a bigger scope of things. So that is really the passion of mine. We have, uh, a House and Senate resolution in the works in DC as well as through the National Federation of Republican Women. The resolution that we created from the local central Oregon Republican Women, uh, has gone to the state level and it's going on to the national 40th biennial convention that's September for hopeful ratification which then expands that message nationally. So that is really the, uh, a huge writing force, uh, in my life. Taking my own story and the stories of Council members into the places of public policy and getting back to best practices in public policy is a real passion of mine. So that's kind of the nutshell, where I come from. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator.
I'm Vicki Breeze Iverson. I've been a lifelong Republican. I've been registered voter since I was eighteen. My husband Bryan and I own and operate several small businesses in Pringle. I've been a Realtor since 2001 and co-own the Pringle Lingermere office. I own a tiny small business in land use and taxation. I'm fifth generation on a ranch here in Pringle. Bryan and I love raising our boys who are eleven and thirteen years old on the ranch. My experience of working at this state capital and the campaigns and being chair of the Crete County Republican Party has fueled a fire that has brought me here today. I think that Oregon's greatest resources have traditionally been our natural resources. We need to honor these. We need to remember the stewards that, that have passed it down to us generations. And they taught us more about how to preserve and regenerate those resources than the latest institutional studies. And I think we need to honor that. I believe in local control. I think our local governments have a good grasp on what our communities need. I'd like to see instead of growing government with more oversight, I'd like to let our locals determine what resources are needed versus reverse difference from the communities. I'm pro-life. I'd like to expand the conversation of women's health. I believe in the freedoms our nation was built on. That includes freedom of speech, freedom of owning your own. Freedom of making choices for our stations, medical freedom, freedom in raising our kids. And I, I believe I can be a solid voice against that for those freedoms in Salem. Turn to DC.
Well, I guess I'm next. I'm Peter W. Sharp. I was born and raised on a small ranch ten miles west of Pliner. My first eight years was in the Pliner school. I graduated from Crete County High School. Uh, went into the Air Force, did four years in the Air Force. The only exciting thing in the Air Force was I formed a, helped form a skydiving club and jumped out of airplane. And that's a lot of fun. Anyone that hasn't done it, you need to try it. It's a lot of fun. But now they're spoiling it because you have to jump with a companion. We just dove out. So anyway, it's a lot more fun now. And that's even more exciting than coming out of the chute on saddle-browed bareback or even seeing wolves. Anyway, I really have no interest in politics, but I did run for county commissioner three different times. The first two times was because I did not, wasn't not impressed by the ones running. And I figured I have no right to tell you what to do if I'm not going to step up for the job. The third time was the state's going Patriots asked me and at the last moment Jerry jumped in. And, uh, he wanted hands down. And I'm really glad because he walked there and I looked in. But I, I really don't have any interest in going to Salem to do that. But because of the fact that I am honest, I stand for what I believe in, I fight for what is right and I won't back down to anybody or anything. So if you decide to send me, if I'm in the state, like I would be willing to go all the way down, but I'm actually supporting Vicki. She's the one we need to have go. Thank you.
Okay, first of our candidates, uh, I propose we can do a whole call. I'll have Cheryl say a name. And then whoever's name is called, you, uh, vote, say the name of a candidate in focus. Oh, I guess, yeah, sorry. Do, uh, so you hear the, uh, uh, folks on the phone or here want to ask any questions, we can do it.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, Vicki, I just wanted to say that you were for medical freedom. Does that mean you're, um, on the anti-vaccination side? I believe that we have the choice. Very good. Yeah.
Great.
What about you?
I personally believe that we need to make our own choices. And so the government telling us to do anything, I'm anti. Just right off the, the bat.
And, um, Deborah?
Yeah.
What is your, is it vaccination?
I am, I support, I supported the team. The HP3063 was a incredible overreach. People should not be forced. I raised my kids. We were given exemptions. The, the vaccinations have changed over the years. We no longer use the live virus. There are so many experimentations going on, um, it within the vaccination field. And if a dangerous precedent success, the, that forces seventy-two injections on our children from birth to eighteen. It is complete government tyranny and abuse. Long story short. Thank you.
Real quick, uh, this is Commissioner Tony about my due apologies for being late today. I do thank you though for this process. You know, uh, respecting the process is an appointment of a state legislature midterm. So, uh, thanks for taking time to get together. Uh, one of the thoughts I have as a current Commissioner is the local control about land use. Uh, we, we celebrate our land use in the state of Oregon and our statewide restricted land use. But forty and forty-five years later, uh, it's getting kind of tense in some areas about city and urban growth, factory, rural development. Um, give me thoughts on that around real quick.
Well, my thought on, on that right off, if that gets taken, Pringle's towards that is that I think they should have done, drawn the line and stopped it a long time ago. If we're gonna build up on the hills around, I don't care. Move all you want up there, but don't be eating up our best farm ground. Californians, they have literally put concrete over the best farm grounds down there. And I don't want to see our little Pringle Valley just covered with house.
I think you need local control. I don't think that somebody, um, did coming out and looking at our land or our communities or using our land for our, for being used. If I went into my speed, I, I think that the people who live on the land who know the land, um, think that when they get to the 100, they circle around the community. And I don't think that makes sense. I don't think that's a good use of our resources. We do have the, the irrigated land that, that we need to protect, but we often need to look at what the land next to it are. What if we put the water on those, do those work? I mean, the, the local people knows their community. I don't think that what is.
Absolutely local, local control. Um, I don't want Portland and Salem and these big cities, uh, deciding what we do. Um, we are all stewards of this land and we care about it just as much as, as, uh, everyone else. And we want to be able to pass this from healthy, um, regions to our, to future generations. So, yeah, it's totally local control.
Thank you.
Do you folks on the phone have any questions?
Mr. Henderson, I, uh, I have a question for you, for the candidates. Um, what's important to me as Commissioner for Deshute County, without being a representative of all, um, work hard for all five counties, therefore fortunately. And, and so what would you each do to make sure in touch with those portions of our counties that only, hardly in the district?
I believe that open communication, this is maybe by the way, the, the, so comes on. I think open communication is key in generations that we, elected officials throughout that are representing the citizens needs to happen. So I know in the past we, there's been regular phone calls with elected officials so that people in Salem know what's happening in local areas. I think those are important. I also think it's been the, the communities is important. Um, in the distance, the first of June, I've been throughout the district minus Jackson County. So, and that's just with my boys and the, it's, so getting around to the district isn't, it isn't impossible. It takes a little time, but our district's worth it. It's beautiful.
I guess I did be next. I, I honestly don't real have, have a concrete position on, on that. I've got problems with Deshute County because they just overgrown. And that is one of the things I don't want to see happen in our, our valley. I mean, I know there are two good people there. And I know a whole lot of people out of the valley in California that's there. And, and some of those are good people. But they don't understand the fact that I don't really have.
Yeah, I'm a connector and I, um, and I honestly have to say, um, it is a real guarantee to say this, but I have not actually looked at the absolute complete boundaries of Lake D55. I'm being honest. I am, um, I, again, I connect, I have, just to the different organizations I'm a part of. And I, it gives us an open door, obviously. Um, but again, I think we all know who, who, who the, the, that person from the seat is.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
I'm sorry to cut whoever off. This is Commissioner Morris in Clamas County. I actually, I apologize to the group and to the candidates. I have to hop off to a conference that was scheduled, um, long before this. But I would like the opportunity to technically, um, weigh in and then before I hop off, if, if so, uh, allowed by the chair.
Is everybody comfortable with a quick vote and then we can continue to ask the candidates' questions afterwards?
Yes. Lake County.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask Cheryl to just start with the name and then start with Kelly, Mr. Morris, so she can get to her next meeting.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the time and effort and energy of all three candidates and I would like to cast my vote for Vicki.
Perfect. Okay, now I'm just gonna start at the top of the list on the today. This will be what will be attached to, um, the document that you guys will all be signing. Um, so who I'm signing at the top? Um, Judge Crocker?
Uh, Vicki.
Commissioner Brummer?
Vicki.
Ryan Barney on the phone? Uh, Commissioner Henderson, you?
Sorry, I, I had another, I'm gonna bother her. Uh, Vicki Breeze Iverson.
Okay. How are you here? Something to do with Breeze Iverson? Kelly?
Uh, Vicki Iverson.
Uh, Rick Dyer, Jackson County Commissioner?
Vicki Iverson.
Uh, Commissioner Strosser in Jackson?
Vicki Iverson.
Commissioner Robertson in Jackson?
Vicki Iverson.
Commissioner Boyd in Clamas?
Vicki Iverson.
And is Commissioner DeGroot, does he would be able to join us from Clamas? Okay. Uh, Commissioner Winters out of Lake County?
Uh, Vicki Iverson.
Commissioner Williams from Lake?
Vicki Iverson.
And Commissioner Albertson from Lake?
Commissioner Iverson. Nurse, excuse me. Vicki Iverson.
Yeah, we got all of that. Okay.
You got a whole thing of exercise.
That will be easy. I will fill that off and pass it.
I heard my feeling. That's why I'm fast with the lead. I helped you get in.
That's, that's common about Deshute County, push it over the top.
I'm shocked at myself. How you doing? You're free. Now you don't want to be.
So do we, is there interest in continuing to ask candidates questions? Just to, is it all better or should we?
You just need to wish him a lot of luck. Yeah. Deshute County decides, doesn't like it, he'll keep it back.
Listen, Commissioner Winters, I have no questions, but I'd like to.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear what you were saying.
Uh, Commissioner Winters, I'd just like to thank all three candidates and the process. And appreciate that Seth, you chairing this meeting and for this to go forward. Thank you so much.
It's been an honor. Thank you all.
Yeah, Commissioner Williams here in Lake County, um, wanna really also extend that and really appreciate the candidates. It's difficult when there's, when there's all good candidates to make some of these decisions. But, uh, really look forward to seeing Vicki down here also, uh, whenever she has time, uh, down here.
Representative Vicki Iverson?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Henderson of Deshute County. Yeah, I wanted to thank every, all three candidates for their name in and being active and, and the concerns you're active in. The real important, I think, Deshute County, working with Vicki, I think she'll bring up, um, really a new energy, a good energy. Uh, it's real challenging over the legislature. We'll be here to help out if we can and, uh, joint, um, things we can work with. Thank you. Thank you Seth for talking to me together, everybody else.
This is Rick Dyer.
I'll take the, oh, sorry, what's that?
This is Rick Dyer from Jackson County and I, I also like to thank all three candidates. And I wanted to, uh, the question I was going to ask, which I can just, uh, make as a statement here is that I'd like to, uh, work with Vicki to, to get some sort of resources allocated to our, uh, to southern Oregon to combat the, uh, the impacts of the fire and smoke. The legislature, as you probably know, last session decided that it wasn't worth any additional resource allocation. And that we think that's something that we need to work hard on changing.
Yes. Uh, let's start that conversation.
Thank you.
Great. I will echo everybody's thanks to the candidates and everybody for showing up and voting and, uh, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have fun.
No, congratulations.
Thank you.
And work with Vicki, that's the benefit of Vicki Iverson. Hey, Vicki, smoke.
I can go by Vicki Iverson or Vicki Breeze Iverson.
Vicki Breeze Iverson is my professional career.
Yeah, so.
So that's it.
I just kind of heard.
So you're gonna wanna probably update your voter registration because it doesn't have the brief. So we have, I have Vicki Iverson on here because that's what she from Secretary of State came in and had.
Yeah, for, for Deshute County, northern Clamas and, uh, Agent Five, um, I'll connect you up and we'll, we have an introduction, chamber, commentary.
Fantastic.
What part of Deshute County do you dislike the most?
Yeah. All right, at twenty minutes to eleven, we will close the special session of the County Board of Commissioners.